Good evening and welcome to the May 1st, 2023 meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectmen. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
John, you made it. Just on the work. Before we lock the doors, thank you. Pam has minutes from April 3rd, 2019. Getting, getting, 2023. Not even worth joking with her anymore. We haven't seen one like over four months old in a while. Okay, again, the focus of, as you would expect, upcoming town meeting going over numbers, articles, warrant, et cetera. Finn from the Health Initiative came in to review the overage, which again, same thing. We should talk about where we were paying that. We committed to paying that overage from.
What was the flip today? He said to me, see the decision.
Are we still waiting for a number?
We got it last week. The 21, 445 number.
So the buckey passed you, you're gonna contribute to a shortfall? Thank you.
Well, I mean, I think the last discussion we had was when we would go to, or I would go to the advisory, ask them if they would use their reserve.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty early in their process, they still have two months to go, so that may be their holdup. On the other hand, we have two months before we have to pay that too. All right, so.
So send a note to Log Meadow and tell them better to owe it to you than cheat you out of it.
Should the board vote on that first?
We have a.
Make it a motion? All right, minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, first on the agenda, the Lacochina Outdoor Dining Expansion. Right there, just turn those mics on.
Push those buttons. Button.
Michael, how are you?
Good, Mr. Flynn, how are you?
Steve, you missed the municipal life, or do you miss it, or?
No, I'm here now, so this is, this gets my fill. I get my kick.
If the board's not aware, Steve actually used to be the attorney for the town of Wilkman.
So Springfield, too, I was a city of Springfield for a lot of years, too, but yeah, no more. Yeah, but this is what this works for me, so I appreciate you guys having us in tonight. Steve Riley, on behalf of Lacochina, what we have is an application for alteration of license premises. Lacochina's been operating for around three years with an additional outdoor patio space that's been temporarily approved under the COVID-19 approvals, and what we're seeking is a permanent approval of that space. There's no further alterations or changes, basically seeking an approval. It's already there.
And the same thing where we, the board approved the shifting of seating, basically, from inside to outside, so the total number never changed.
Yeah, the capacity doesn't change. There's an indoor patio area, like a, off the bar, basically they use that space to swap out the outdoor.
All right, so questions from the Board of Approvals have been given. I thought I saw something from Finn, that Finn McCool, the health agent, that if the swap out stayed in place, the septic was approved.
Yes, and the swap out, no problem, that's a current practice, it'll be ongoing.
So the capacity number is not modified?
Correct.
Basically, okay.
All right, so you've probably done a thousand of these.
About a few, yeah.
Okay, okay, and I've done none, so bear with me.
Sure.
Okay. So, and item two on your application, I don't know if you have it there.
Alteration of premises.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, so the restaurant where the bar is, is 4,727 square feet?
That's the whole, that's the entire restaurant.
The entire restaurant, is that the patio included in it?
No, the patio is listed separately, so if you see exterior.
Okay, so then you got total square footage of 4,727.
Yeah.
Shouldn't you add in the outdoor seating?
They list the interior square footage, they don't include the outdoors part of the interior square footage.
Really?
So I've never seen on a liquor license application where they would add the patio square footage to this, it's the interior.
All right, and then on seating capacity, you got 99, but on your 304 certificate, it says a lot more people. Let me see if I got it here. On your 304 certificate, now, do they do, is this seated, is that because it's seated, or is the, does the, when the fire chief comes and inspects it, is it how many people they can pack in there?
So these numbers, I'm not sure who created them originally, but typically they're done by an architect that submits them, but this 99 came from the liquor license.
Okay, hold on. I don't have it with.
I'm not sure what the other form is.
Yeah, here, this here. So it says the, where the bar is, is 85 capacity, where the dining room is, was, I don't know, was it 65? And then it says another room, 40, but that would be the patio, I guess.
Yeah, I mean, this is the first time I've seen this. I don't know how they break up the 99, but interior, it's 99 seated capacity.
And so you're gonna, and it's 42 outside, so you're only gonna have 50 something inside? Is that the?
Yeah, if there's that many outside, I don't think that typically happens. Paul can probably say how many more people they usually have outside, but I don't think the demands.
Depends on the weather and everything, right?
Yeah.
And then you've got $28,000 in renovate, $27,875 in renovations? That's item four?
Correct.
Is that, is that the renovation that's already been done?
Yes, so that's been done, correct.
In lighting, there's gonna be no new lighting?
That's all encompassed within that number.
Okay, that's the stuff that's already done, that's what's out there now.
All done, we just wanted to be able to show what was done for that area previously, even though it's already been done, we wanted to just be.
Does it include the horse?
You have to ask these guys that question.
That was prior to.
And lastly, you have an entertainment license, right? Are you planning to do any entertainment out there?
We have, we have entertainment license for, what is it, hours, operation seven to ten? Two nights a week.
For outdoors out there?
Yes, generally one or two acoustics.
Friday, Saturday only?
Yeah.
Yes.
Friday, Saturday only. Okay. I have no further questions for this, Whitney, your honor.
Reserving the right to call him back?
Yes.
Greg?
No, I just, I wanna make sure that we follow what our health director had proposed, that, you know, the seating offsets just because of septic capacities and stuff like that, so other than that, I don't see any issues. I mean, we've granted it the last two years for the COVID extension, so.
And there'll be no difference, this is just making it, I won't say permanent, but codifying it as well.
Correct, rather than being under the temporary COVID approvals, you'd be under chapter 138 approved for all the rational.
Oh, let me ask you about that. So, but this is gonna take time to go through the ABCC, right? I mean, they take.
I think there's a temporary approval that's up, so it would be helpful if we could get the temporary approval while this pans with the ABCC. My guess would be that the turnaround time's about 45 days with the ABCC right now.
Now, the COVID extension, Dan, was 2025, wasn't it?
2024.
It was on what, March 29th, I believe it went into place?
April 1st.
April 1st.
It expires April 1st.
Oh, yeah, next year, yeah, next year.
Okay, so. Entertainer motion?
Should we?
If you want to make contingent on the ABCC.
Well, I'm wondering if we should make a motion to extend the COVID regulations per Governor Healey's extension for one year to follow into that category, so then they can progress as status quo until the ABC comes through with their license.
You want to approve the extension?
Oh, approve the extension first.
Legislative extension.
Legislative extension first.
And then, and then.
Which I thought we had, but.
I don't think we did it.
No.
Formerly.
We did Mountain View, I think.
So, and then when the ABCC approval comes forward, the other one goes into, permanence goes into effect.
Yeah, yeah, so that would carry over, you know, so there's no lapse.
Basically, it's two motions.
Right, so.
So we need a motion to approve the COVID extensions for their operation, and that gives you cover, basically, because you don't have the other thing yet.
Correct. So I move we extend the COVID policy extension for outdoor dining capacity per Governor Healey's extension, it was dated March 29th, I believe it was, 2023, for one year to April 1st, 2024.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Then, as I take it, a motion to approve the request for permanent outdoor seating subject to all regulatory approval by state agencies as well.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So technically, that's not it until you get your ABCC thing, but you're covered because of COVID. But when you get that, you'll come forward it back to Pam and Bob, so we have it back in our records. Not that we probably wouldn't be copied already, probably, right?
Haven't any luck with the weather yet, though.
We did three weeks ago, four weeks ago.
In March.
Lot of rain this week. Grass is gonna be green now.
Yeah, right. Done, right?
Done. He's trying to do it fast to keep his feed down, you know?
Thank you so much.
It was a very efficient meeting.
I'm sure it was better in Wilkman.
I don't wanna say it, though.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the Housing Authority appointment. Let me just give the recap, and then we can do the moving.
I'll recuse.
I know, I'll do the recap. So basically, and Don, correct me if I'm wrong, in 2021, the state, because they're always looking for something to do, passed a law that said all local housing authority boards should have one member appointed to their board who lives in the housing group, and that would take effect in July 21. At the next election, when a person was up for election, that had to be changed to follow that. Our election in '22 did not have a person up for election, because that was the year the state appointee had the spot in the five-person rotation. So the first election that actually had somebody up for election was the election of this year, May 15, '23. So, and the person who was elected to that seat, who was a resident there, was not going to run again. So, as I think we covered in a meeting before, it was kind of like a good turn of events. We had an opening, there was not gonna be an incumbent that was going to be, I don't wanna say put out, but running for it, so it was a good opportunity to take advantage of what the state in their all-seeing wisdom had told us that we needed to do, even though we already had two residents elected to the board before, as you will. So, going forward, we've, through the Housing Authority, notified that there is an upcoming appointment coming to the Board of Selectmen that would be effective May 16, the day after the election. Yeah. May 16th, and that'll be for a term of five years. So, we posted that for 30 days, the 30 days expired, two people expressed interest, and we've invited them to our meeting for conversation with the board prior to our making an appointment. Okay, further to that, one of the people happens to be related to one of our members, and so Don would like to.
I'll recuse myself.
Would you now?
Yes.
Are you recusing yourself from vote, or are you still gonna ask questions?
I'm recusing myself from the discussion.
Okay.
And the vote. I've consulted with town council and the Ethics Commission, they said that's the best thing to do.
Probably, yeah. That would bring a question, I don't have an answer to that. Do you have to recuse yourself from interviewing the other person? Or what would be the purpose if you're not voting anyhow?
I'm accusing myself.
No, I'm just saying, you probably wouldn't, but if you're not voting anyhow, what would be the purpose?
Well, the purpose, right, right.
Okay.
All right.
Enjoy our comfortable chairs.
No, no, I wanna go down here.
In the office and look through our papers, really?
Yeah, I'm gonna go through the secret papers by the chairs.
The password is.
Thanks, Don. Okay, so, first is Pam Melcher. Hi, I'm glad you were able to find your way here.
Nice to be here.
Again?
Again, yet again.
For those who don't remember, Diana actually served as our receptionist during the COVID times.
Yes, the COVID receptionist.
Just out of curiosity, before we jump into this, how was we done appointments in past when there's been two candidates? Do we allow them both in the same room during conversations?
We have, we have. Okay. Hi.
Hi.
So I guess we'll just start, what, why do you want to be on the Housing Authority?
I'm relatively new to the Commons, I've only been there a couple of years, but I've got.
Probably pull that closer to you, Diane.
I've got.
Can I call you Diane?
Pardon?
Can I call you Diane?
You certainly may have been called worse.
Strike that for the minutes.
Strike that for the minutes, yeah. I'm relatively new to the Commons, but I've had an opportunity to meet a lot of the other residents and talk to them and hear their input to this, and I've decided that maybe a new face on the board would be a good idea. There's things that I could bring to the board that I've notified. I noticed that one thing, the Massachusetts now has, they offer grants to the housing boards, so maybe there's a grant available that we can give to our residents to improve something. There's things like, they've mentioned like a Wi-Fi in the town comp, their common area. A lot of the elderly, even though we're elderly, we still wanna do the technical things, and a lot of them don't have cars, they don't have the ability to get to the library or the senior center, but they would like that. It's just things that I could bring to the board that I've spoken to other people about. And, you know, the community is lovely, it's a great community, the board has been excellent, and I'm just looking to be appointed to it.
You mentioned the Wi-Fi. What are, what are some things that you think could be addressed by having you on the board?
Again, the Wi-Fi is one of them. Again, grants, there may be something that we can use to make it a little bit nicer, something extra for the residents. But mostly just being with the board and giving my input when something comes up, following the rules and regulations, but also offering input, things that I would like to see changed when they do come up.
Pam's the liaison to the, to the board there, and I don't go to, get to every meeting, but I don't recall, have you been going to any meetings or?
No, I had not. I had not, I, it was a while before I was even aware of when the meetings were. My own fault, because I don't often read the bulletin board, but, and then it was just jobs or something that was, you know, bad timing. But shame on me.
What kind of activities do they do down in that community room?
Pardon?
What kind of activities are in that community room?
They play bingo Monday and Thursday. The community room is open to any resident that they wanna have a party or family in for dinner or something, which is hard, we only have the small kitchen, but it's used for that very, very, very often, there's always somebody, you just mark it on the calendar and the day is yours. They play cards there. Like I said, they have the bingo, they have family dinners, they have holidays, birthday parties, you name it, showers.
How would you explain or express your decision-making process? Is a, would you, are you an emotional decision-maker, an educated decision-maker, or a combination?
Probably an educated.
And what would go into your process for, something comes amongst your board and you have to deliberate, what would be your process in looking at different criteria forward to the decision?
I would, once they had presented me with what the options were, I would go back home and look at it, try to find some more information on it, and then at the next meeting, I'd present my feelings on it, whether I agreed with it or disagreed and the reasons why.
Is there anything else you'd like to share with the board before?
No, I appreciate you having me here, and I appreciate you considering me for an appointment.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Diane, she warmed us up, so, you know. I do wanna make a point and remiss on this, we broadcast over Zoom as well as live here, and we do record, and I did see a message from Dalton that the Times is also recording this meeting. Hello?
Hi, John.
Hi.
I'm Diane Abdell, in case you were wondering.
And Diane, also a resident of the Housing Authority?
Seven years.
Seven years, and you're interested in an appointment to the board?
Yes, I am.
Okay, we were told that you had actually taken out papers to run for the spot.
I got, I had all my signatures before I went on vacation, and then I got an email from somebody, and they said that that wasn't really necessary, that there was gonna be an election. But I did do all the paperwork that I was required of.
And who was stepping down, was it Cheryl Lee?
It's Cheryl Peterson.
Just to confirm, there's only one spot?
One spot available, right, yeah. See, there is one person elected right now who does live there, plus Cliff.
Yep.
Cheryl Collins, Indiana, I believe.
Right, and I've been to a couple of board meetings. It was suggested by Lisa that I attend them, so I can see what's going on and how things are run.
Lisa is who? I'm sorry. Lisa is who?
DeFranco.
DeFranco.
She's the executive director of the Housing Authority, so.
Just for record.
Diane shared some of her thoughts, what are yours about, do you see any needs, any?
Oh, there's always gonna be needs with the elderly. I've been very active with the people in the Commons, I'm active in the town, I collate and fold a scribe every week, I volunteer for that, but for the people, there's a lot of elderly, and they don't seem to know what's going on, and I'd like to share a lot of it with them, I mean.
So you're seeing a need for more outreach, basically?
Yes, definitely, definitely.
What are some areas that you think need addressing that you would bring light to as being on the board?
Well, one of the big things is the speed limit, okay? The speed limit there is 10. People don't go 10, and I think that's very dangerous. I'd like to have that addressed, I don't know how we would correct it, but I think it's something that needs to be looked into. And we also have a big issue with dog problems. People aren't walking their dogs properly, and their dogs are peeing all over the guards that the people have, and Lisa put up a letter about that, and there's gotta be a better way to fix the issue. I mean, technically, I would think one good way would be when everybody dies, dogs die, we wouldn't allow them anymore. I mean, that's my feeling. I mean, I had a cat for 20 years, obviously a cat's not a dog, I understand that, but they're ruining the complex.
How would you explain or your decision-making process? Would you be an emotional decision-maker, or an educated, or a combination of both? What would be your process behind that?
Probably both, but by sitting in on the meetings, it's been very interesting, because everybody hashes through how they feel, and I've been educated by the man there, Charlie? Who's the man?
At the meeting?
Yeah. Cliff, yeah, he's very informative, and the other women are, too, and I've learned a lot from them, so I would have to probably listen to them, I mean, I wouldn't do any research outside the facility, but I'd listen to them, but I'm an emotional person also, so I like think the people would be interested in how I felt.
Just trying to make sure we ask the same things. What do you see as the biggest need at the Housing Authority? Or is it just what you said before, outreach and involvement? Some people just don't wanna be involved, but.
Well, see, when I left, when I first moved in there, and I lost. I was.
Technical difficulty.
Somebody asked. Oh, okay, I didn't know what was going on. When I first moved, when I first moved into Hampton Centennial Commons, I was asked to be on the board at that time.
I unmuted myself, yes.
Okay, sure about that.
Okay. When I first moved into the Commons, I was asked to be on the board, but I chose not to at that time, because I wasn't familiar with any of the people, and I had just retired, so, but by living there this long, I feel that I've become more aware of all the issues, and I'd really like to be considered as a candidate.
Good.
Okay. Do you want me to stay, or can I leave?
Sit back in the chair. We're gonna take action right now.
Oh, all right.
Well, I think we have a difficult decision.
Very difficult.
I think we are, we are very fortunate to have two people interested in volunteering. Craig and I, Craig has been here long enough to see, you know, we've been forming committees and searching for people to serve on.
It's not always easy to have one person come forward.
And, I mean, I do know that Mrs. Abdell did take out papers interested in running for the seat prior to this notification, so that was something. I don't know, I have to say, I would hope that whoever is not appointed continues to stay active and looks for other opportunities to serve. It's too bad we can't take both.
I'm gonna go back to one of the questions I had asked, are you an emotional decision-maker or an educated decision-maker? And I think one thing stood out to me was Diane came in with a list of references and a letter of recommendation, and while I think they both had great ideas and great thoughts, I think just on a educational perspective of a decision-making, I would, I would have to side with Diane right now, just because of.
Okay, you're gonna have to work it out, because both are named Diane.
You're right.
So you're covering yourself, great job, Greg. Yeah, thanks.
I'm looking here, so, based on what I just said, I would move that we would appoint Diane Melcher to the Housing Authority.
I'll second that for point of discussion, I, I kinda, again, having been around forever, I tend to lean towards someone who takes the time to get involved, and I really give Mrs. Abdell credit for actually going out and wanting to serve. And running for something is not easy. Being appointed is great, because you don't have to, like, go out and, and to say that, I'm gonna go out and get signatures, go on the ballot, it's, for a lot of people, they tell me, I won't do it, because it's, it's a scary thing, I don't wanna do it. And the fact that she also attended some board meetings to see what's going on, that, you know, and I've heard from other neighbors, she's been around being engaged, so I seconded your motion for discussion on the two candidates, or say. This, this has all the hallmarks of being. Right, so I seconded your nomination. So I seconded your nomination. And I'll nominate Mrs. Abdal for the Housing Authority Board.
I guess I'll second for the purpose of discussion.
Thank you. All right, so now we have two nominations and two people and two whatever, so. Laura, you want to vote too? No.
It's tough when there's just...
I know, right.
It puts a hard spot.
So I guess I'll just call for the vote. All those in favor of Mrs. Abdal, raise your hand. All those in favor of Ms. Melcher? Do we get a ballot? No, John, you do not get, I know you're the fourth selection, John. You don't get a vote. This is no reflection on either of you, seriously. Like I said before, we are so, it's so great to have two people interested. You know, we wish we could take you both. No, no, we're going to, we're going to cut the, we're going to make it, yeah, we're appointing Diane to the Board, right?
That's what I'm trying to do.
There we go. And you both show up. Bob, what do we do? Have you seen it before in other towns or a tie vote?
That's a hard spot, yeah.
Let's do a little research on that because this isn't just a friend. This is a little more, yeah, so. Right, sister, yeah, right. If that was, if we actually disclosed it, that's the reason Don stepped away. One of the candidates is his sister, and he, I don't know, he said publicly he was going to vote against her. He didn't say that, did he? No, I'm kidding. So I'd like some further guidance. This has never happened in my, my time on here and I know it could have happened. We all expected, it's almost a possibility, but we'll get some research. So... I can't say ladies, right? This isn't East Hampton, right?
Diane?
I'm going to, yeah, thank you. Diane and Diane. So we deadlocked one to one. Wow. So we're going to do a little research and see what happens. It's probably going to come up at our meeting Monday and we're going to meet, we typically meet for an hour prior to town meeting, and that'll be at Thorn Burgess. So it'll be probably on our agenda either as further action or some guidance from the Town Administrator and possibly the Town Attorney. So that's where we are.
Thank you both.
I know you were hoping to walk out of here with that new badge and like, you know, but it's not happening. That's a great question. We're glad you brought that. Thank you. That's a great question.
We're hoping for clarification next week and then if...
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, might come down to that.
Mark, you got the easy one.
You guys get Don back here.
No, true. Ask your brother to come back up.
Go up? Six months and six months?
No, no kidding. That's actually a great question. Maybe, is there a limit? It's like conservation. There's no limit on the number of people. We've seen, remember the research that they could have, remember?
Is there a size limit, do you know, Don? Or Housing Authority?
Could we appoint both? Bob, can you look that up? Right, but is there a limit? I mean, what if you had a six-person Board? Is there a limit on the Board size? Basically is our question. Like I said, you know, it's nice to get two volunteers when we usually get zero, right, Don? Somebody's dropping off. Yeah, thanks. All right, so next we have the Highway Superintendent. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for having me.
Hello, Mark.
I had...
I asked Mark to put together the road construction schedule for the upcoming season and he has received calls from everybody in town asking for their roads to be done. He's narrowed it down to at least three or four.
The winners are? Half a dozen anyway. I had sent the list out last Friday for, for review. I had discovered that there was on a couple of these project, that projects, there was more existing asphalt in place than I had originally thought, so that kind of, that information caused me to make a decision to mill and pave a few of these roads.
Rather than full reclaim?
Rather than a full-depth reclamation. And in turn, being able to save a little bit of money and put that towards some other projects to kind of stretch the money as, as far as we can.
So Tippett, let's just go over the amount of money. So we don't have as much as we've had in prior years because we don't have that secondary, basically, that the state gave out a year or so ago where they gave out an extra. Still wending its possibility. Yeah, it's a possibility that we're going to get that $1.3 million check too, right, someday? Mark will be retired by the time. So how much money do we have for the upcoming season?
So estimated for the upcoming season, we have just over $500,000, $511,000, to be, $978 to be exact. That includes $250,000 out of the Highway Maintenance Account and approximately $251,978 for Chapter 90. I've not received...
Have we received the letter yet?
I have not received the letter from, from the state, kind of just going off.
May sometime last year when we got it?
Early May, early, yeah, early May. I'm assuming it's going to be around the same. It usually is.
For the bonding, for the bonding, the tenure bond? Okay, so that's how much you have, $511, $512, basically?
Correct, and so the projects I'm proposing, obviously, this is a discussion, a draft proposal. The total, total of these projects, these estimates are $512,865. The little bit, the little bit of overage I can, I can make up with, you know, from my Highway Maintenance Account, $1,000 or whatever. So I don't know if you wanted to go over the list or...
Here's the list.
Okay. Right, okay. So there's been, the first three have actually been on my radar for several years and put off for one reason or another because of planned construction or what have you. Also...
Everything has different priorities and it always changes.
The other thing too, with the, with the full-depth reclamation, you really want to be above, at or above 16,000 yards to get any kind of discount for mobilization fees, et cetera. So if you, for example, if you have a company come in to do a full-depth reclamation, grading, compacting, fine grading, you know, you're looking at, and it's under 16,000 square, square yards, you're looking at up to 750 a square yard. Now, if you're over that 16,000 square yards, that price comes down about half. You're looking at 350. So I try, so I have to think of that too.
I must do a second row for...
Right, right. So that's not the case this time around. Looks like we're going to be doing some milling and paving. I've got the Highland Estates, which is Highland Circle and Hillside Lane.
Hamden Heights.
I'm sorry, Hamden Heights, right, yep. South Ridge Road, same actions. I've got some, some work I'd like to do up at the top of Mountain Road. It's a little bit of water manipulation and, and overlay.
I want to make a point that I think, and you've told me before, these three projects here are roads that are, got some wear and tear on them. I mean, go back to my time on the planning board, I actually signed all three of these projects and that was 20-something years ago.
Correct.
These have some...
Yeah, we're looking at 90s.
They've paid their dues and it's time for some, some upgrade on them at this point.
Correct.
The other thing I think people should know, Mark, you just did some work at Hickory and that was actually from last year's money. That was closing out the FY '23 construction schedule, correct?
That's correct. That work's actually going to start Wednesday.
Last year, basically.
Yes, that's correct. Yep, absolutely.
So and then you've got a couple of minor things. You've got, oh, transfer station. In conversations with the people working up there now with the solar project, we made the point that we would expect, we're not going to do this until all their work is done to make sure there's no wear and tear after the new, new paving.
Correct, correct. And actually, I was only looking at the, the road, the transfer station road right now. So of course, trying to make these numbers jive, I have to have all different priced-out projects. So at the end, when with the balance I had left, you know, I had looked at, you know, yeah, the road going up the transfer station, just the road only for now.
Well, you said the road only. So is that up to the recycling barn, basically, or?
Actually, I measured it out just to the top of the hill.
So at the...
Right where, yeah, right where the road, yeah, yes, yep. I had some paving to be done at the Highway Garage to finish that up completely, including the driveway and the set-up section of the parking lot. I also, I didn't, I didn't have a chance to measure it, but I also wanted to look at the, the patch on Main Street, possibly milling and paving that from the water, from the water project.
How was that settling for you?
Well, it's, it's... I guess in hindsight, I would have, I learned something and I, and I think I would have requested to do a half-lane mill and pave and something just to remember for, for next time or, you know, gas company project or anything, I think.
I think going ahead because potentially this could affect your upcoming Phase 2, if you will, so.
So, you know, they, it's an okay patch, but, you know, it's very, it's wavy, it's, it's still humped.
Any issues in winter with it this year?
No issues, no, no issues. It's just something that's kind of bugs me. I don't know. But it's not a smooth, you know, smooth road, but that's, that's also up for discussion. I don't have it on the list because I haven't had a chance to measure it out, but I had also, I'm also trying to pick away, also trying to pick away at North Road in phases. So I've got one, one, well, I've got a phase I can, I can put some more berm on and overlay. Then I've got another phase up at the top that will include some drainage work, some catch basin and underground piping. For the drainage work, to include like the, the upper part of North Road, maybe Burley Road as well and kind of tie that all into a project.
So you did complete most of Burley Road. I'm seeing on the north side of it, that ditching is pretty well gone into piping. And it seems like now it's all the, the, at the top where it comes from Burley, on the west side of it is where the ditch is left.
Correct, and I'd like to, and if we're going to go ahead and do that, I like to just tie, tie everything in with catch basins and probably keep the same outfalls just so we don't have to go through that kind of process with, you know, conservation and EPA and all nasty EP and all that stuff, can use the same outfalls, I'm hoping.
I don't want to take too much time, but I'd like your thoughts because people have brought this up to me. The ditches work to contain water coming in. Now, it seems like we have two types of ditches. You have ditches that come from a slope coming down and that wouldn't work as well for the pipe because now you would potentially sheet that water onto the road. The ditches you're talking about are most containment of water coming off the road surface because these are sides that have like stone walls next to them. They don't have a lot of, you know, surface coming down from a hill per se. So it seems like this would work out better for this pipe project because you're, A, making a safety change to the road. You don't have a deep ditch where people can go off into.
Right.
You're still containing the water. The only issue that would come up is then maintenance. Do you worry about that piping system filling up and how do you maintain that? I mean, does it silt up on occasion, I mean, a buried pipe?
So now the buried, what I had done up on Burley Road was kind of a temporary slash, you know, placeholder for, we've done it elsewhere too, up a section on Ames. That pipe is perforated. Okay, we, when, when we go ahead and do like a regular drainage system, that, that pipe's going to be solid. It's not going to have any holes in it. I don't, and with, you know, not, we're not using as much sand, if, if any, these days for snow and ice treatment, you know, and then our annual catch basin cleaning. And then, you know, with the pitch, I don't see that there would be, I think they would clean themselves out. Those catch basins would have sumps that would collect the solids that would be cleaned out once a year if, you know, if needed.
Again, that's a question that came up to me, like, is it, is there more maintenance with a buried pipe instead of a ditch? You're saying, hmm, because you still have to clean the ditch otherwise.
We still, there's maintenance regardless. You know, the only thing is if and when someday the state decides to include, you know, a whole town, the whole town as part of an MS4 program and not just the west side, you know, now you're, you're kind of committed. So, I mean, roadside drainage ditches work and they work well if they're maintained and everything, but, and they're, they're easy to maintain, but it's, it's really a coin toss.
Well, you're loving your new cutter thing, right?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, yep.
Articulated arm is really... Any questions on the color of the asphalt or?
Just a question. It says, "Convert catch basin tops from Cape Cod Connecticut tops to Cape Cod Connecticut tops." What does that actually mean?
So for some reason, when that subdivision was put in, it was given Cape Cod berm with regular Connecticut top catch basins. So what that means is a Connecticut top is a catch basin that you see that's got the concrete already included in it with the grate kind of formed in the middle. Now, the back, there's a berm, a preformed berm. So when you're plowing, you know, you've got a Cape Cod berm, which is a little bit lower and a little bit less of a, you know, a little more gentle of an angle. You're plowing that and then all of a sudden you come to a Connecticut, like, regular top and you hit it and if you go up to that subdivision, you'll see every single corner of those tops are shaped, are like sheared off. So you're risking damage to your plows, damage to your trucks. So I think now would be a good time to change those tops over because now they do make a Connecticut top with a Cape Cod-style berm in the back, so it'll match with that berm.
So is that more standard, I'll go back to Gary because he's done a lot of this. Is that more of a standard that they propose in subdivisions nowadays, those type of catch basins? that they propose in subdivisions nowadays, those type of catch basins?
This one was Highland, Highland.
Highland and Hillside. And like a smooth run for the plow as well, coming along, and, uh, yeah.
I think another reason too, a lot of times they use the Cape Cod in, in a lot of these subdivisions was, uh, they can run that berm right through the driveway. And, again, not have to spend money or, or, uh, time, handwork on doing a driveway apron. They can run that and, you know, and that's actually, you know, that's a good thing. It's keeping water out of people's driveway if they have a downward slope towards their house or, or whatever. So, I think that you see that in a lot of, a lot of these, um, subdivisions as well.
Well, we have a proposal from the superintendent on a couple of things to be done. Uh, obviously, there's a bit of a shortfall in the amount of a thousand dollars, you know, that could be. Yeah, that could be a difference either transfer or he could be wrong. Uh, the other possibility is, as Bob said, there is legislation out there to possibly give the town some money, six figures, you know, along the way. I'd like to see if you also have a couple of backup ones for if the number comes in from Boston. I think, now, maybe we have another hundred million into the bond, right? So, you know, if there's another thirty or forty thousand coming to the town, what would be your next project? Or, would there be one of these, you know, I'm gonna take off the Highway Garage paving, because now I can do this thing with that money and this money.
Absolutely. I, I can, I had a list of, uh, all kinds of estimates. Like I said, this is the one I, I put together.
Maybe work with Bob, see what the status of, you know, he can contact Ash's office, see where we are with that type of thing. And come back, we're not starting just yet. I would say, I don't know how the board feels, I'm fine with your thought of Highland and South Ridge. Those would seem to be priority ones to get done, so if you're looking to get bidding started for that, I'd suggest to the board that we, we tell Mark to go ahead with that part at least. Because those are your two big numbers to begin anyhow.
They are, um, I think, the only, the only thing is, is I would like to, I would like to, uh, like I did last year, bid everything as one, one town-wide project, um, and that seemed to work out very well, actually.
Keep the cost down too, right?
It would.
Including the landfill and the Highway Garage?
I would, yeah, that would be all included in the, in the, in the, in the, in the bid.
Okay, well, then the impetus is back on you to work with Bob, let's find out the status and come back to us right away as soon as possible.
As far as if there, if we think there is gonna be some extra money, okay, absolutely.
If the possibility is thirty percent, let's put this to bed. If he's saying it's pretty rock solid, they're gonna get it done, then you say, you know what, I'm taking off my garage, I'm taking off the landfill, and now I can take care of, you know, this road right now, which is really, we were just short this much.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, be happy to do that.
I will say, not a lot of people care that your driveway is in good shape.
I know. I just like to finish things.
I know.
But anyways, uh, yeah, absolutely, we can definitely do that.
Everything else good up there?
Very good.
Can't wait to see the town report, it's gonna have your building on the cover?
Um, is it? Oh, wasn't one of my pictures I sent over, was it? Oh, good.
We photoshopped you in, Mark.
Oh, great. Can't wait.
If you, don't mind, because actually they're looking for you to autograph all of them.
Sorry.
No, just while Mark's here, um, he was emailing me today, apparently, he was looking into that hole on Main Street, the one that got split.
Oh, yes.
So, Mark did some digging and found out the reason the pole hasn't changed yet is because the utilities, I guess, and they fight back and forth, nobody wanted to tell one another that they weren't gonna proceed until fiber line that's there, the MBI fiber line was moved to the new pole. Right? Is that how I'm understanding it?
Correct, they have to do it in a certain order, and the fiber was holding up the, the works, or.
Apparently, they just didn't wanna tell anybody that the fiber needed to be changed, so I reached out to the contacts at Web City, and they reached out to local links who I guess is in charge of the MBI, and they're gonna put on their schedule to move it over.
Thank you very much.
Well, what happened if it just fell? Then what, they just leave it there in the road?
It's just.
Like a tree in the river, same thing, yeah. So, it's amazing that we always think that, oh, it's the cable company and the phone company arguing, now there's a third player that actually has to be considered as well.
Is there a fiber line there now?
It's the MBI fiber line.
Oh, the MBI, okay.
So, that's what it is, that fiber line that's there.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate that, yeah.
Full disclosure, my grandfather held the patent on the Cape Cod drainage things.
Really?
Wow.
Yeah.
If you need a break on the price.
You need a break, I'll, I'll see if I can dig him up.
Yeah, well, anything you can do would be much appreciated. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
See you next week, you're coming to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great. You'll have pictures of the truck for everybody to see and all that?
Bring the truck.
New truck, I haven't bought it yet, but send it to Bob, he can put it up on the screen for screen sharing. Great. Document management, do we have a quote from Entree?
Great.
Get that right along.
That was easy.
Conservation agent in stormwater manager position.
You just put one of those mics in front of Bob, Ted says he can't hear Bob. That one needs a battery. That one.
So, you have a job description for a conservation agent and one for a stormwater management. It's both about water, and those who have the skills and training, seems to me that they fit together very well. In fact, I'm aware of one other town that has, has advertised, maybe six months ago, for such a position. We do not, we have not identified funds, but if the board wants to move forward, I will merge both of those uh, into one job description that, uh, would enable us to, at some point, advertise. I think we have two very important needs in the town, and, uh, we have made an effort over three years to find a conservation agent, part-time. If you have those skills, chances are you don't want a part-time job, you want a full-time job. And so, the only way we can get someone to do that work is to partner with another town, or several towns. As you know, we've tried Long Meadow, we've tried, we've tried Munson, we've tried Wilbraham, we've tried Ludlow, and in all instances, it hasn't worked out. So, this is just another approach that I thought I'd bring to the board, and see what your thoughts are.
It's creative, I think it helps, you know, if we can.
I mean, I could, I can create the position, I can merge the two job descriptions and come up with one position. We do not have funding in the current budget.
Right.
Uh, we'd have to think of something, um, maybe for the fall, although I guess there'd be resistance.
Typically, we don't do salaries in the fall.
Yeah, there'd be resistance. There is and will be money in the Conservation Commission budget that now funds the work that goes on with Bonnie.
Why? Why?
It, it funds some of her activities for the, for the Conservation Commission.
So, you're saying the new person would take responsibilities away from what Bonnie does?
Well, that's the way the job description, the job description does say that there would be an administrative component. And whenever I talk with Bonnie, she really does not want to continue indefinitely in that position. So, I mean, part of the impetus for this is that I, I see her regularly and, and she makes it very clear, she liked being on the commission and would like to return to the commission, and really sees some limit as to how long she'd be willing to stay in the position that she now occupies, and so, one thought would be to take some funds there and also some funds out of the stormwater budget, maybe we can come up with something.
Well, merging three into one almost then, and then straight, merging three into one almost, merging administration and.
Well, I mean, they, they need support, but, I mean, I think the reality is the, the work might be in the range of twenty hours for them a week. I mean, yeah, twenty hours a week. And stormwater, I mean, there's ups and downs, I mean, a lot of work at some times, at some points, and then none. But we are seeing projects where, uh, stormwater comes up, and it seems to me that it's not being effectively managed right now. Well, it's not being managed, I mean, that's, that's the problem.
All right, well, you can merge them and see what happens, mate.
Basically, yes.
I can take the next step in terms of coming up with a unified job description.
Right, and then we can.
All right, based on what I gave you.
Now, we'll include also step and everything like that, Cole.
Yes.
All right, gentlemen, I'm not sure you're aware, but next Monday night, we have the annual town meeting.
You don't say. You have a copy of the motions.
You have tickets for the game?
It's annual?
Biannual?
You have a copy of the motions if we wanna make a sign.
All right, sure, let's divide this up.
The report.
I'm thinking Mark's, remember the contract thing, I know, look at this part. Get the contract apart, right, you know, what was that? Mark's brothers, were they ripping the contract apart at the end, they're handing out little slips to everybody, uh? All right, annual reports.
Number one. Takes, who takes number one?
Great. Budget advising, you.
Wait a minute, I, I need to know, who's doing, you're doing the first two?
I'm doing the first one.
Okay.
Advisory's doing Article Two.
Right.
Okay.
Don, you wanna take three and four, as long as you understand.
Prior year would be.
No reason to get back down, I mean, for that, yeah.
Don?
Enterprise fund is Craig. Craig's got five, right?
Five, yeah.
CPC is Doug. Conservation is Ted. No, it can't be Mark, he doesn't live here, I can do that. Hi. I'll take Highway with eight. Library is.
Who's doing eight?
I am. Library is one of the librarians. One of the trustees, or Ellen, I think Ellen's done the past couple of years.
Yeah, she's done it.
Tree stump, we're giving that to Doug. Don't tell him.
Yep.
All right, fire truck renovation.
Well, once some be there from the mount, from.
And trust.
Yeah, so we can put down DB slash SH for Sherry, sure. Or Judy, or Judy.
Fire truck.
Well, we got. All right, you want the, uh, first one, Don?
Okay.
All right. Craig, you want the.
Where do we go with the renovation?
Well, right.
Don, it's fire truck.
I don't care if Ed makes the motion either, you know, that might be fine too.
Yeah, we have Ed make the motions for both fire ones.
Right, for both fire. Explain exactly what the renovation is.
Yeah.
I mean, the big thing about the renovation one, that bill was originally twenty-five thousand, because the fire department did allow the work themselves, they've got the appropriation down under ten. So, pretty, pretty good deal.
So, I'll have, uh, uh, we're gonna have the fire chief do it.
Sure.
Well. EPIB's?
I'll do it, fine. Making me do it, because I.
No time to take one.
Oh, you're making me do it because you don't wanna pronounce it, that's why. AED devices, thank you. Uh, give Ed, Ed again, sure. Uh, who wants the dump truck? Don, you can be associated with spending two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand. Uh, master plan. Uh, but it's gonna be one of the PBs, I'm sure, you know, whether it's, I think it'll probably be Jason, because Madison has recused herself because one of her firmers bidding on it. So, we'll give, probably Jason, but if you could tell Joanne, we expect one of their board.
Sixteen Jim Smith.
Right. Fiber optic is Craig, yeah.
Senior Center Design.
Don Collins. Accessory apartment will be planning board again.
It'll be interesting to see what happens on that one.
Yeah.
The discussion, I mean, you know.
I'll do one, I'll do twenty. Uh, if you don't mind, I'd like to do twenty-one.
Good.
Assessors, assessors.
Norm, probably.
Twenty-two?
Either Norm or Bob, or Bob, one of the assessors, yeah.
Go resource.
I'm looking at one of you guys.
I'll take it.
Okay, great. And then advisory, 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 yeah.
Advisory, advisory.
AC.
Okay.
End of the day, I'll be trying to figure who AC is, who's doing. Andy, what? So, if we wanna say, this experience was, I, you never can say what's going to be the, the thing at the town meeting. You never.
No, no.
Leaks law, uh, my gosh, the fence at the cemetery. You know, oh, twenty-five minutes.
At least.
Yeah, right.
Warranty's posted around town, and it's also posted on the town website.
Right, I saw it, and posted Friday, right, great. Um, okay. Uh, it could be the citizen petition, it could be the planning board, it could be the discussion on one of the plans, which are no, no action, but just to be clear, there are three, three things we're planning no action on, the master plan, the senior center funding, uh, and the fiber optic, but we are gonna give an explanation of where those projects are at this point and our future plans for them. So, you're limited, five minutes and only three PowerPoint presentations.
I will say for Article Seventeen, um, I'm talking with Brian Sullivan today, they're prepared to come to the meeting on the eighth with a short presentation. We're actually meeting on Wednesday this week with our fiber committee to go over just, you know, what they've done, what they're doing, and, you know, just everybody's on the same page going into town meeting.
Great.
I heard the news that was going into Boston that Quincy is doing, doing this too, and they're, they're starting their first section of the town, and.
Oh, are they?
It's like people are happy, happy, happy.
Sure, they are, sure. Um, in terms of town meeting, so we coordinated with the school, Herb and all that, we're all good. Okay. So. Great. So, any more questions about town meeting? Dress code, we're all good.
We already decided.
Tux, tux, tails, tails or no tails?
Tails.
Only because we went to Zoom, that's why you want to start looking good, yeah. Blow the dust off of that with tux on, Don.
Squeeze into that thing again.
All right. Uh, last thing on our thing is to, again, continuing discussion. Oh, quickly, I wanna thank you gentlemen for covering last week, I'm sorry, illness and couldn't be here and, uh, I mean, you guys passed some great laws while I was out, thank you, yeah. I thought you were gonna bring John up to the table and just put him in my seat.
Just, just to sit in.
Thanks. Just cover over the last part of the tag, and oh, it says John there, yeah, great. So, um, so, we didn't push off the discussion about that, and I think we're, we need to get on top of that again. So, just to recap where I think we were, we're at kind of a, a crossroad here where we have an opportunity to rethink how we run the business of the town. Between, we have a retiree, a retiree, and a part-time guy. We go back to what the town had decided to do back in 17 slash 18 was to go to a full-time town administrator. And we don't have that and I think we've been extremely blessed by Bob working his butt off, you know, part-time, if you will. And if you were able to work full-time, we wouldn't be talking. So, but you can't unless, well, you could, you could give up your pension. I won't say it's all about us, it is about you.
All, all that has been distributed to you.
Oh, really? Huh, so you'd be looking for a big bump then, wouldn't you?
You'd have to issue a bond.
Okay, thanks, no thanks. Yeah.
I did give you, by the way, uh, three or four, actually four or five different uh, uh, job descriptions for assistant town manager, which are in the OneDrive.
Well, quickly, and we do want to make that point because we did see the news last week, you know, Bob, and for those who might be confused, Bob is not the town manager, even though Western Mass News reported it that way. It's, it's a difference, Bob has been a town manager and he does understand that's a whole different animal than administrator, because manager runs the kit and the bottle. You know, and so administrator works with the select.
There's three levels in Massachusetts.
Right.
Town coordinator, town administrator, town manager.
Well, let's talk about mayor, Mr. Mayor, yeah, all right.
And some towns, like on the west bank of the Connecticut River, have gone from open town meeting to, uh, the mayor and council. And, uh, of course, they're larger communities.
So. Go ahead. You must be speaking.
There's a thought over there.
There's a thought, there's a thought. Well, I, I, so I don't want to get ahead of ourselves, but should we first, there's a couple of things. Should we first, do we need to reappoint Bob? Because I think his contract is coming up, right, for a period of time. A, B, uh, we got this government study committee going on and how are they, are they gonna talk about town administrator, town assistant town administrator, uh, I don't know where they're going, I don't know, have they even met again, I don't know.
We've all agreed to keep arms length from whatever they're doing, so I don't know.
I know, I know, so I don't know how, any of the cities, we decide, you know, we do, how that affects them, but.
Well, they don't Zoom and they don't want to do.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know what's, what's going on there. And then we have the more immediate, uh, decision about, uh, the fire assistant person. Right, clerical person for fire, right, because Jane's leaving that on July 1st. So. So I'm thinking.
Well, I'm thinking also Pam is leaving and Pam, you had a date in mind of September 15th. Right, so.
So I'm, so right now I'm thinking, what about Bob?
Great movie.
Yeah, Pam, Jane loses the four hours that she has been working for the fire department. She will be with us for, she has said at least half of the fiscal.
Yeah, yeah, she can lose the four hours of the fire department, but we, we've put in the budget,
Right.
a clerical person for 15 hours, but I have some questions about that too, so.
But that's in the budget.
But that's in the budget at this point.
Yeah, so the, if the budget goes through, it's a hiring issue.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I understand your question, I think I've had them. Of all that stuff there, there's nobody, there's nothing that the three people there can't do and cut that hour down now. I thought jumping all the way up might be a big thing until we totally define what they do.
Right.
But that's another question.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know we're kind of dancing around it here a bit. But I mean, we have an opportunity, I think I talked before, the role of selectmen, I talked about that office being open five days a week.
That's another, that's another issue, yeah.
We have it budgeted at 30 hours, okay, so it's six hours a day. And we're back to, in my opinion, serving the town better. Also being a little more responsive to what we need done for our meetings on Monday. And that really is our call based on the description and the people we're looking for. Bob has done some work on the job descriptions again. Does that job, then that job merge up a little bit to include more of the administrator type thing, like that being the assistant town administrator. The difficulty there is the money. I think it's only budgeted in the 60s right now, maybe that doesn't entice anybody to come in.
May I interrupt? The one thing I've.
You dig it?
The one thing I, I, I can't because of my pension. You know, I'm not gonna, I'm in the same boat as him. Except I went to the private sector, so I don't have to worry about that. The, um, I was giving me the good chance of hot now. Not awful. Talking about, what were you talking about?
Roll the tape back.
You, you, you.
You were giving up your pension, you said.
Yeah, 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 I know, I know, but I was talking, oh, the, the, the assistant, the, the thing that struck me about reading all the job descriptions of the assistant town administrators, what all of them were responsible for personnel. For the personnel, you know, the personnel documents, the setting up appointments for hiring, the insurance stuff, the, that kind of stuff.
The HR function.
So it's like the whole, it was like their whole thing was the HR function, you know, you know.
That's very common. Uh, I noticed the one, at least one of those job descriptions, they had a financial responsibility, but that doesn't apply in our situation.
Yeah, no.
They were, they were like also the assistant finance director. That's, you know, doesn't sit here very well.
The biggest thing I thought, most of them were, 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 uh, the, like, they, they performed like the real HR function, you know, so.
So the other thing then, and this kind of like then, if I'm saying the selectmen's office needs to be five days a week, well, shouldn't we go back to what the town wanted? And the administrator being five days a week, and we're constricted, we can't do that. And this is like putting the elephant out there then, do we talk to Bob and say, Bob, if you can't do five days, should we make a change? And you've been so good because we've, and look, I'll do whatever you want. I love this job, but I also love what Hampton needs and if the town needs more, you know, do what you gotta do.
Whatever you.
Right.
Decide.
You serve at the pleasure of the president or whatever, yeah, whatever that phrase is. So it's kind of like, you're concerned, we have short time. It's a, it's a thought thing here, but we're down to two months. Bob has made it clear that he's very aware what the talent pool is out there, I think. Do we do a short type thing and say, look, we're gonna make a change? We gotta make a change, we gotta get back to five days. We're running a $16 million business here on a part-time basis. And that's not doing our job for the town people of Hampton. They're paying pretty good taxes, they have good responses and there's only two offices that are open five days a week, and I'm pretty sure it's the building inspector and the town clerk, if you call her, she's here.
Door's locked, door's locked, she's here.
Door's locked, but I mean, you know, that, that's it, and the rest of the people are not, well, Jane's probably here, but that door's locked. So I put it out there for discussion, my feeling is it's time to make a change back. The town was cut back 18 years ago in the budget. The budget shortfall 20, 2005. A lot of, a lot of places have been restored. The senior center's been built back up, the library has been built back up. Heck, we've done a good job of building back up police and fire.
Parks and Rec is looking to build back up too.
Parks and Rec also looking to build back up, but we're responsible for setting the guidance for the town. And I think, these are hard questions, but that's why we're here. Really open that up, that's, that's.
So your first thing is going to five days a week?
For the selectmen's office, correct. But also, you know, larger sense for a management, a management for the town hall.
I think it's, um, it would be beneficial to the town, the people, and all of our responsibilities to have somebody here five days a week facilitating what are used for the agendas, drafts, paperwork. Not discounting what Bob's done, because he's done a great job, you know, in the limited time he's got, but you know, how many times have we said, oh, on something happens on Friday and we need to get answers for something, and now we're, now we're waiting till Monday? I think it would be, I think it would be in our best interest to, you know, if we're looking to make changes, so as sense, start at the top and allow that to filter down.
I mean, we have town meeting coming up and we're gonna be, you know, typically Friday is a question like nothing's happening, so. These are hard questions, these are hard, because we're, we're all friends here. We are, right, Don?
Oh, yeah.
You're on tape. And these are hard things, but Pam has given us an opportunity. You know, in tap, because we wouldn't want to force this on her while she was here. But by doing this, we, it allows us to look at it from a lens that says, okay, from an operational standpoint, like we would do in business, how do we respond to our customers? And we got 5,000 customers that want us to provide the best product. And the best product is public service. We had it 20 years ago, we need to get back there, in my opinion. So, gentlemen.
When was it? When were Friday eliminated because when I was hired, I was hired at $35,000. And the flex was if I had additional work. I talked with Friday, but I was always happy to still be a teacher.
Right. Sure was, yep. I remember with Kate Ash, you know, many times, and like I said. Pretty much at that time, sure, I think Doreen was working five days, you know, she was board of health at that time. But also, that was a time when she was also the, and Don, you made that point before, she could step in. Because the health requirement wasn't so big back then, so it was more of a, a sharing role at that point. Um, Park and Rec, I think, went back, they were five days, uh, you know, we started with Peter Murray, moved on Cindy Coffin, then Jay Fenelison was the last park director, also five days a week. And it was a drastic cut in 2005. Remember the street lights when it turned off, the library was closed, you know, so. So I put it out there, any questions gonna be, and these are hard questions, um, you know, you brought up contract renewal. You know, Bob is sitting on tenterhooks here. Those taxes on Metta are incredibly high, he needs to know if he's working come July.
Well, I, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna find it here, I don't think we're gonna find it by July.
Well, who's to say? But I'm also saying, I think we were responsible to the town to provide back to what they wanted, they voted for a full-time town administrator. We had a committee, very dedicated people, and that's what they came back with. And we had one. And through a change, you know, we were able to find Bob, thank God, to step in an interim basis, help us out. Maybe at that time we should have said, okay, now we need to go full-time, we didn't. Bob has given us great value, great value. I mean, ain't nobody gets the money like Bob does. Mr. Schoolmager Biden, yeah, thank you.
You know, if there's a decision to go for it, the full-time person, uh, might not be prepared for that.
The other thing, this is just a quick thought in my mind. If we take a staggered approach to it, to say, okay, yeah, we do need to search, it's not gonna be two months, but reality is, you could be full-time for the time up until the, a new person comes in. Because your limitation is based on an annual number, right, not a weekly number. Right? So if, for instance, I, like I say, this is just coming to me. Say you stayed on until September 1st. You can bill five hours, you can bill five days a week because you're gonna have so much empty time at the end, you still didn't exceed 1,200? Right, right. And right now, at the beginning, you're at 400 or whatever, you know. So I just throw it out there. The extra time, you could do both things. Full-time and. Either internally or whichever way. I, I, these are not easy things to talk about, because we're all, you know, we think friends of everybody here.
I think that scratches the itch though, like you're saying, though, that, uh, you know, gets us to that full-time status while we conduct a search. And, you know, you know, it's the immediate carry-on there. Um, I'm also curious too, I mean, as, as a role of like, say, say like Bob is a grant writer, would there be some way where we'd be able to fund a grant writer salary through grant writing? Like commission-based grant writing or?
Some places do that.
I like the commission-based part, you know, because that way it's no, no outlay, except maybe clerical.
Bob gets, you know, a hundred thousand dollars for gypsy moths, you know, it takes 20% off of that, I don't know, there's no numbers out there now, but.
Whoa. On tape, he's like, his eyes just lit up, his eyes just lit up.
Most grants usually provide an amount for administration.
Yeah.
Oh, really?
They'll tell you, everything in the program.
Really, so even if you've got a grant for stormwater management, none of that clear, clear? Wow.
That changed maybe 10 years ago.
Or bill us back, basically. Hey, I got you this much, okay, my bill is this, and you pay it out of the following year like a, like a, uh, back bill.
Yeah, yeah, out of that fund.
Because you never know how much it's gonna be until, okay, this is how much I got for you.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, let's consider this and, and see, I, I think if we would do this, we would need a pretty good game plan of how we go about it. You know, because we're gonna make sure that the work continues.
Right.
And, uh.
We have a short meeting next week. I'm willing to say, gentlemen, are you willing to schedule a second meeting next week to talk about this, like even on a Wednesday?
Yeah, yeah.
Next week, because the problem is the next.
Next week, you got that.
But next week, hey, we're not even gonna be here, we're gonna be at Burgess. And not even for an hour specifically, we've been 50 minutes. Walking advisory stuff like, you know, wandering the halls.
Right, right, right.
We're always looking for Jones to come back and say that.
Campaigning and stuff like.
John, come on, we gotta, we gotta vote.
Looking for my locker. But same thing, we don't, you know, there's not much there.
Yeah.
You don't want there to be much there either. Nothing substantial should be there. No. No.
No, I think what you said, John, before was we, instead of working in eight or eight and a half hour day, you shortened it down to six hour days.
For instance, that, you know, we have 30 hours for the administrative assistant. You know, so six hours a day, over five days, same hourage, you know. All right, so.
So schedule another meeting next week, like Wednesday.
Put it out there. Yeah, so Wednesday, I have a planning board meeting. Uh, how was your stretch planned?
We won't be meeting next Tuesday, if we're meeting this Tuesday, we won't be meeting next Tuesday, so that's clear.
Okay, and we can also recap town meeting if we want to, all right?
On Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Tuesday, 6.
6.
So we'll finalize the agenda, but right now we're only talking, maybe town meeting recap, continued discussion on organization.
Only two things.
Right. I mean, if something else comes up, whatever. You know. All right. Uh, correspondence, selectmen reports, I think we're all pretty much geared up for next week.
We're meeting tomorrow night, everyone's meeting tomorrow night at, uh,
5:30.
5:30.
At the library?
At the, or the library.
IRC.
Yeah, IRC, yes.
Information Resource Center.
Yeah, library.
I do have to say, so, last week's, last week's meeting, I got on the, uh, the YouTube channel instead of the Zoom thing, and yes, it is much clearer.
You got on the Youtubes.
Yeah, yeah, the channel for the YouTube chat.
Yeah, when they, when they.
That is much clearer than the Zoom part, no question.
They have a, a production camera there, usually with a, one of those.
With a mic pickup.
Shotgun mics, yeah, it's.
The problem with the Zoom ones, I think all she does is use the laptop mic.
They use the owl.
Yeah. All right, so that's 5:30, Don, tomorrow?
5:30 tomorrow.
Okay. And the subject of that is just, are we reviewing some of the current plans, is, is John pretty much presenting current status?
John's gonna present current status and he's also gonna talk about which of the items. of the items on there would require a change in the regional agreement.
Is he going to propose the number one, or is it going to be like a blankets?
I think we're down to four.
Four.
So, we throw some balloons up and see what goes. Okay, should be a good time, tune in. We may want to, if, if it's a school committee meeting, it's pretty well buried, I will tell you, to find their, their links. I think we have it on our site under advisory, and maybe it's on our page as well, so, what the Zoom information is. So, town administrator report.
Okay, we're finalized with the ATM warrant with motions and summaries. We have had an important meeting for the municipal vulnerability project last Tuesday. Among them, among the items discussed was design for a new East Main Street Bridge, and they are asking, as part of the application, that they have letters of endorsement. We've had, I think we have half a dozen or more, there's one there for the chair, if you will endorse it. On Wednesday, as was mentioned, there's an important meeting here in person.
Yes.
On the fiber optic, of the fiber optic committee, to bring the representatives from Whip City Fiber here to meet with the committee and basically update the committee on progress made. The FOG committee, which I'm a member, met last week, and the Hampton situation was at the top of their agenda. They indicated that whenever the government study committee is ready to meet with them, that they're willing to, to meet again. And the first time, I guess, there was a lot of trouble with Zoom. And my understanding is the government study committee is going to meet on the twenty-second and then decide when they're going to meet with the FOG committee. We're going to post signs for the ATM on Tuesday, tomorrow. Interviews with veterans will take place.
On the government's study committee, they're, they're running out of time, too. They're supposed to make a report to the town meeting in May, you know? So, if you're only meeting once a month.
I think they've only had, what, two meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Well, we agree to stay away from that, so.
Well, we've all agreed, we're not going to be involved, so.
We're supposed to have a report for this me, this May? This meeting coming up?
No, no.
Since May?
Twenty, May twenty-four.
Gotcha.
But, you know, you figure summer and.
Interviews with candidates for veteran service agent take place on Wednesday the third.
Yeah, I sent an email to the board saying that I had heard the guy quit, and I thought it should be on our agenda, and I guess somebody notified you or Pam or?
We got the meeting notice.
So, they advertised?
They've advertised.
Would have been nice to have a little something, a little more.
I think two, two candidates.
Yeah, I understand. Would have been nice to have something a little more official. I mean, I heard through the grapevine, and perhaps a notice to the board from them saying, by the way, our agent has resigned, we will be looking for something rather than around the coffee table at the bagel nut. No, I mean, there is a process here. We, we gave them an office in our town building. I think a little more back and forth would be helpful, so.
Well, I've also been in touch with the staff for Senate, for our state senator and our state representative, and asked them to pursue the bond funds that were approved last fall by the legislature. And they've agreed to do that, so. It's becoming very frustrating.
Sure.
I am also working on a couple of grants. One of them is for two-hundred-plus-thousand dollars through the one, through the gaming commission for design of the sidewalk. You recall, we got an estimate, and money to design the south side was in the bond issue, and I had asked them for money to design the other side, north side, so. I have to provide more information to them tomorrow, and I'm kind of hopeful that we can get that, get that funding. At least we'll have the design done. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, well, I did, yeah, because I keep getting these emails from the One Stop, Community One Stop for Growth, is that the same thing, the Intelligrams? Okay. Basically, just saying, hey, we're out there.
Yep.
Quickly, we did get a revised assessment for those who attended the joint meeting last week with the school committee, the advisory committee, and the finance committee of Warburgham. There was a pretty, let's say what you will, there was a pretty constructive back and forth, and the school committee subsequently voted a lower assessment number, which does bring a lowering of our assessment in Hampton. They did vote to remove the capital items from the assessment as well, and possibly bring those back in the fall, when both communities were interested in treating them with free cash at that point. Now, that pretty much covered it?
No.
So, bottom line is, it's a lower number to Hampton.
A little bit lower, a little bit lower.
There, I think the thought was they're going to get a pretty good bump, maybe, on the number for regional transportation from the state, which would be a bulk of the offset, you know?
Be good if they get it, you know?
Yeah, because the state always, yeah, they'll promise it, they'll see the check, you know, as Bob just reported. Where's the money? Greg?
I have a couple food permits from Board of Health that need approval and vote. First one, well, they're both for Ferrandino Maple LLC. The first one is for operation of a mobile food truck. They've created all the paperwork, and any motion will be approval of Finn, he's getting out there next week to go through the inspection process. So, this is just trying to get our end done before the inspections, but nothing will be approved until Finn gives a sign-off.
How does that work? You know, I mean, do they have to get, like, a permit in every town?
Yeah.
With the mobile, mobile?
So, from what I was understanding, the way it works is they get their, their host town, wherever they're, they're registered. And if they want to go, say, to the next town over, they have to go to their Board of Health, issue a one-day permit, and usually they'll, they'll look for, what is your, you know, your origin permitting?
Okay, okay, all right. So, I'll move approval pending, what are we pending?
Finn's.
This health inspector's inspection.
Second.
All favor?
Right.
Then another one, also for Ferrandino, they want a license to manufacture frozen desserts and/or ice cream, assuming they're going to want to run it on the same truck.
Is that, are they going to have maple flavor?
I would hope so. Maple milkshakes are awesome.
So, you're requiring samples at every vote, right?
Move approval pending, I guess Finn's approval as well.
There's all, all in order, second.
All favor?
Right.
Perfect. Sign them.
Oh, you've already signed? Okay, is there any other business to come before the board?
We adjourned.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
See you all at the town meeting next week. Thank you.